All right. If I could have your attention, please? Thank you. Thank you. We will convene the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of December 4, 2023. We will bring that to order. If the clerk will call me with, help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Nine present.
And if you please stand for the, with me, for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our community, our families, and our freedom. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members and for the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed for our country throughout our nation's history. And we give thanks for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout our country who bravely serve our citizens no matter what, and we pray for their safety and well-being. We pray for guidance and that you give each of us compassion, patience, understanding, wisdom, and courage as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We pray for these things, in Christ's name, amen. Under public, under public comment, we have several things. One is we had our hometown Christmas this week, this Friday, this past Friday, and I want to thank everybody that was able to help put that event on. It wasn't quite as big as it was last year, but it was certainly successful. Specifically, I want to thank Police Chief Woody, Fire Chief Shadle, and Brent Anderson for making sure that we were able to put a safe parade on this year, and I also want to thank Gina for her help as well. We did have, Saturday morning, we had shop with a cop at Walmart, and that was at 7:30, ended roughly quarter to 10, 10 o'clock or so. So I want to thank our Belvidere Police Department, rank and file, who were there, and I want to thank our Fire Department, rank and file, and both chiefs that were there. One, you wouldn't have noticed, he had a mask on, but anyhow, I want to thank them, thank them both, and thank them all for being there. I also want to thank Alderwoman Gramkowski and Alderwoman Frank. They came and they wrapped presents for a few hours for all the kids that the officers took around to shop with, and so that, that was very, very nice. So, all in all, it was a success, and I think it, I think that it spoke of what the real meaning of Christmas is about. So, with that being said, I do have, I do have something that I want to address the council, but I want to talk to the public about this. And I did watch our last meeting of November 27th, and in particular, the recent committee levy discussion and the subsequent action that was taken by the committee for a 17.33% tax levy increase that, and so I will read my thoughts on that. Since I have received calls regarding this levy increase, and it appears to be of concerns to residents, and I don't blame them, I want to address their concerns tonight. As elected officials, I believe we should do our best to represent our constituents, those that have placed their trust in us by voting us into office. Sometimes that can be very difficult. However, in this instance, increasing our tax levy on residents by 17.33% is totally unnecessary and it's unfair. As a matter of fact, I would consider it to be misrepresentation. It's an assault on taxpayers' pocketbooks, and I would never support or sign onto such a levy burden. With that said, I want to share my thoughts in opposing this tax levy increase proposal of November 27th and why I oppose it. First, this levy is unprecedented. To place this into its proper perspective, since 2014, the last 10 years, the city of Belvidere's tax levy increases have totaled 13.69%, significantly less than the 17.33% that was passed or supported last Monday evening in one year, for one year. And who will this affect and how will it affect them? Well, it's going to affect our seniors, it's going to affect our families, it's going to affect our single parents with children, it's going to affect our laid-off employees, it's going to affect our residents and those most vulnerable, vulnerable in struggling households. Essentially, every homeowner in the city who is not independently wealthy will be affected. And how will it affect, and how will it affect our residents? As we all have felt the effects of an inflationary rate of eight and a half to 10%, depending on who you listen to, it will mean less money for seniors, for families, for single parents, and for those laid off recently, to try and make ends meet with food, fuel, prescriptions, heat, and so on and so forth. As well, the two sponsors of this motion, Second Ward Alderman Dan Snow and First Ward Alderman John Albertini, both entrusted to represent the folks who live in our city's two largest mobile home parks, Four Seasons in Ward 1 and Greenview Estates in Ward 2. Both parks are home to many seniors and struggling families, residents who I've heard from, and I can assure you that these residents will see their lot rent increase to cover this 17.33% tax increase, levy increase. Keep in mind, residents in both parks, Greenview and Four Seasons do not pay a traditional real estate tax, they pay a privileged tax, and the park owner pays property taxes on the, on the respective lot parcels. You can be certain, the property owner of both of these parks, one owner, will pass this tax levy increase directly back to park residents. Mr. Albertini has recently claimed he's advocating with our state rep against unfair lot rent increases, yet has sponsored Alderman Snow's motion to increase a tax levy by 17.33%. Really? Do you not understand this support for this levy increase is contrary to helping fellow Four Seasons residents? It will increase your lot rent, it will bring you increases. This levy not only squeezes folks financially in Four Seasons and Greenview, it also squeezes all of our other residents' homeowners in Ward 1, outside Four Seasons, and every resident of the entire city of Belvidere. It is out of touch, and it's wrong. I doubt if Alderman Albertini and Alderman Snow would have told, would have told voters a mere six months ago, when they were seeking support from their respective ward voters, that they intended to slap an unprecedented 17.33% tax levy increase upon them. If they had, I doubt they would have had received any support whatsoever. However, I am sure of this, and it will be coming up later on in the, in the agenda this evening. I've known Clayton Stevens a long time, and as Alderman, he would have never made that motion or made that second, that I am convinced of. At last week's meeting, Alderman Albertini had stated, "I'm new," quote, quote, "I'm new, and I'm thinking, I think I'm doing a good job." Really? As a matter of fact, I have recently entrusted Mr. Albertini to represent senior citizens by placing him on the Boone County Council of Aging Board as our City of Belvidere representative liaison. In hindsight, I certainly am disappointed, and I question my appointment and my own judgment. As mayor, my job is to represent the constituents of the community we are, who are taxpayers. This latest tax levy increase motion does not do that. It is out of touch with all of our citizens' needs and violates their trust as to how we represent them. I, we, the council, have worked hard and have been successful in attracting economic development opportunities to Belvidere. These investments and developments will increase our job base, our future revenue stream, and our ability to provide services to our residents while avoiding overtaxation at a time when many simply cannot afford it. If we are prudent and patient... This levy increase exhibits neither prudence or patience. Therefore, I'm asking this council to resist this 17.33% levy plan and apply a caring hand rather than a hurtful levy increase. And for those that have called me and those that have stopped over to my house, I wanted to make sure that I let you know, as mayor, how I feel about it, and I don't think I'm alone. So, I did want to make those comments so that there was no misunderstanding about where I stand and what I stand for, and what I think is good government and what I think is overtaxation. With that being said, we have two other individuals that have put in, have put in a letter for public comment, and I will recognize them now. Ms. Sheri Bartel. Hi, Sheri. Please state your name, please, for the record.
My name is Sheri Bartelt. I live at 2200 Sunrise Drive in Belvidere, Illinois, in Four Seasons. I'm here to address the 17% tax levy on homeowners of Belvidere. At this time, it is too much to ask. Stellantis, which I just talked to the union rep before I came in here, the union president, I should say, at this time, it's just, like I said, it's just too much to ask. Stellantis is closed. It will not be up and running for quite a while. In saying that, Plant 1, which is their main plant, will now be probably up and running for at least a year and a half to two years. So at that time, you must realize, you're not getting your full amount of tax money out of them. The parts depot will be at least a year and a half, no tax money out of that. The new battery plant, at least three years, no tax money out of that, just on your property tax. General Mills, hopefully, up and running within this next year. Walmart, probably two years out. The only tax on that is going to be their property. The gas station out here, hopefully, it's up and running within the next few months. So, with that being said, I think this is a too high a levy to put on the people of Belvidere and all at once? That's ridiculous and rather stupid thinking. As for Alderman John Albertini, I am in the Four Seasons Park. You have told the people of Four Seasons that you are fighting for their working of keeping their monthly payments down and from going up, while you had seconded the 17% tax levy on property, on the property out there. The property owners will be getting this. They will probably be relaying that to one way or the other, and as you know, they gave us a one increase here just a couple of years ago, where at one time, our taxes, our, our property that we paid for every month, our payments, covered our water and our sewer and our trash. They no longer do. We are now paying for that. Plus, our lot rent goes up 21% every year. I'm not sure what Greenview's is, but I think theirs is close to what ours is. So the owners of the park will be getting the 17% increase. They will find a way to get it to the renters of the park, and there are a lot of senior citizens out there. On top of that, in reading upon some of this, which I happened to come up on an article, that years ago, when Mr. Yoder owned Four Seasons, they had an argument with the city, and it was on the extra additions to our properties out there, such as our garages and any other buildings that we had there. Yoder argued that it was not the property owner's responsibility to pay for those taxes, it was the owner of the homes. Now, they could probably go back and say, "Hey, you have a garage attached, we're going to let you start paying the taxes on that garage," because it was up, and it was a fault for here in this council years ago, and the city had to pay 200 and some thousand dollars back to them, and they weren't the only ones. It was also with Greenview. That being said, I'm not happy with the 17% increase. I'm, I, it, it just, I just do not understand, especially Dan Snow, who has been on this council for years, why he'd want to push a 17% increase. I have no idea why you'd want to do that, considering you should know what that would involve with the people here. After all, I was on accounting, I do know what a levy is, and I knew what it can be So, by pushing a 17% levy, you're actually hurting this whole area. But the thing that you're actually hurting the most is, when any other, any other company wants to come in here and look at this area for building, you're going to say, "Why should we look at this area? They're going to put a 17% levy on taxes. I'm not going to that area, God only knows what they're going to do next." I am firmly against a 17% levy. I can understand a little bit, but 17% is over and above and completely ridiculous. Thank you.
And I do have, we do have registered also Deanna Veale. Deanna, if you'd come up to the microphone, please, and state your name.
Good evening. Good evening. I am not a public speaker, a speaker at all, so please forgive me. Deanna Veale, I grew up here, I've lived in Ward 1 since 2009, and other areas before that. This tax levy motion, what in the world are you thinking? Who are you representing? Because it certainly does not appear to be any of the taxpayers in the city. With no questions, no discussion, Alderman Snow, you immediately motioned to adopt the highest tax levy option, plus added $37,000 of just total pork, six other options, and you choose the dire straits. The motion was instantly seconded by you, like you can even wait to get it out of your mouth fast enough. Did you think about it at all? And do you really think that this isn't going to affect the area that you represent? I'm in your ward, never even heard of you till now. I don't know of anyone that got a 17% raise this year, not even the UAW with everything that they went through. And look at the reality of the world we're living in. We have the highest inflation since 1985. People are just barely making it. I read an article last night that said you would have to make an extra $15,000 to live the same way that you did just a few years ago. In the last few years, I have sat there and watched the line grow longer and longer for the B1 food pantry. Every week, it goes around my entire neighborhood now. But yet, let's tax another 17% on these people that can barely afford food. I mean, they have to line up two hours beforehand to even get food, because the line is so long, they want to get it before it runs out. Just last month, I helped at the UAW Food Bank, I signed up 120 people within the first hour that needed food and coats and winter wear. And it only takes a couple of minutes on Facebook to see the needs of this community, like PTO members from schools, asking for donations for shoes and coats for kids who come to school without them. These are the people that you represent, the seniors, the families, the people that can barely pay the rent in their mortgages now. But let's go ahead, add a 17% tax levy like there's no other choice. There are six other choices, and you, sir, chose the highest one right off the bat, like you both had discussed it beforehand. And that $37,000 or $37,000 for special interest groups? It's funny, when you look that up, the $35,000 that you wanted to go to growth dimensions, you were on there as a bronze investor. And the other $2,000 is another special fund. These places need to be fundraising their own money, not getting it from the taxpayers. If you believe in that, go ahead and donate, but you don't need to do it with our tax dollars. And is it a coincidence? The former mayor is the president of the Sister of Cities organization, so that sounds like a political favor to me. Y'all need to work together and make this work. You can do better. Everybody in this city deserves better. And anyone thinking that this levy is a good idea needs to wake up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's all we have. We will move to item four, approval of the minutes. In your packet, you have number A, approval of the minutes as a regular, of the regular meeting of Belvidere City Council dated November 20, 23, as presented. Could I have a motion to that effect, please, to approve those minutes? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, and a second. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Any concerns? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Nay. Motion passed, thank you. Under public hearing, we have none. Item five, under special, special messages and proclamations, we have none. Approval of expenditures, item seven, we have none. Item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers, item A, approval of minutes of the committee of the whole, public safety and finance and personnel, dated November 27, 2023, as presented. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any discussion? Any comments? Any concerns? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item nine, under unfinished business, we have item A, ordinance 650H for a second reading, that being an ordinance relating to Public Act 102-1143, the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act, and establishing paid leave requirements for all city employees. Could I have a motion to that effect, please, to pass those? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you, and is there a second? Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. And is there any discussion? Any questions? Any concerns? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Motion passed, thank you. And then moving on to item 10, new business, we have item A, which is on this evening for just a first reading, that being ordinance 651H, an ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvidere, Illinois, Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2023, and ending April 30, 2024. We have item B for first reading as well, ordinance 652H, that being, an ordinance making a levy and providing for a special service area district in the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2023, and ending April 30 of 2024. And we also have for a first reading, ordinance 653H, for, that being an ordinance making a levy and providing for a special use, for a special area, number three tax in the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2020, 2023, and ending April 30, 2024. We turn the page, item D. We have for a first reading as well, ordinance 654H, that being an ordinance authorizing the execution of a pre-annexation agreement between the city of Belvidere and Rock Road Companies, Inc., relating to a quarry east of Irene Road and south of Graham Road in Boone County, Illinois, and I know the city attorney may have a comment regarding this reading. No, you don't, okay. No, you don't. Okay. All right. Moving on, we have item E, ordinance 655H, as well for first reading, that being an ordinance amending Section 110-91 regarding stop streets of the city of Belvidere Municipal Code to add Union Avenue and West Sixth Street as a four-way stop intersection. And we also have item F, ordinance 656H as a first reading, that being an ordinance amending Section 14-152 of the city of Belvidere Municipal Code to increase the number of video gaming locations permits and provide for non-abandonment of license pending state approval. Moving on to motions forwarded from the committee, out of committee, we have motions forwarded from the committee of the whole, public safety, finance, and personnel of November 27th, 2023. Motions out of finance and personnel, Chairwoman Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to consent, to consent to the appointment of Clayton Stevens as Alderman of the first ward to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Alderman Porter for the remainder of the term.
All right, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions, any discussion regarding that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
No.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
Grahamkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Albertini?
No.
Four in favor, motion lost.
Motion failed. Moving on, and just so the council's aware, I will be giving you another, I will submitting, be submitting to you for consideration, another candidate for Alderman Ward One. I think we have, is it 60 days? That will be forthcoming. Movements of Public Works, Chairman Snow?
Thank you, Your Honor. B, motion to purchase a 2015 International 10-yard dump truck from the village of East Dundee in the amount of $30,000. The truck will be paid for from Street Department line item 01-5-310-6020.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Are there any questions or concerns regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Grahamkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And Chairman Snow, item C.
Motion to approve your proposal from Monroe Truck and Equipment in the amount of $25,000 and $26,000 for the 10-yard dump box. The dump box will be paid for from Street Department line item 01-5-310-6020.
Okay. We have that motion out of committee. Are there any questions, any concerns regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed? Nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Grahamkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And that is all we have on the agenda this evening. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Brereton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? All right. We're adjourned for the record at 6:33 PM. Thank you.